Go ahead and call the October meeting of USD 431 to order roll call. All are present. Agenda, have one addition to the agenda on new business, item G. We have our FCC LA out of state travel request. I think that's the only addition.
I move to adopt the agenda as amended.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the agenda as amended. Discussion, all in favor? Pose, motion carries seven zero. Item four, review of strategic plan.
Just want to bring your attention to the mission. USD 431 and its community are committed to the success of each student academically and socially. And then the vision, which the admin team have helped me to kind of reword just a little bit, makes it a little more concise. Graduates will be an independent, reliable, and employable citizen in life and career. So, just bringing those to attention as we go through and make decisions.
Nothing else. Item five, opportunity for visitors. Welcome to our news media. Glad to see you here. Item six, consent agenda. We have minutes of the revenue neutral hearing minutes September 11th, budget hearing minutes of September 11th, regular meeting minutes of September 11th, minutes from September 18th, special meeting, cash balance report, expenditure report, and activities report.
And the cash balance report was updated this afternoon. So if you saw that one this weekend, it was updated this afternoon to adjust some funds for the LOB and vocational funds. Title right now is in the negative and we'll be requesting that money to reimburse title whenever that comes due. So, activities report, I did contact Skyward today. They sent me some ideas on how to get the report to print off and I can, I'll try to do that and get it to you as soon as I get that figured out. So that didn't come until this afternoon.
The only expenditure that really jumped at me was the $38,000 electric bill for August.
That does jump out, doesn't it?
Any questions on any of those items?
I move to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the consent agenda as presented. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Pose, motion carries seven zero. Moving on to new business, accreditation cycle information.
So I wanted to give you a heads up. KISA will continue. They have labeled it KISA 2.0. I am assuming that that's what they will do. For the 23-24 school year, they are considering it a learning year. And remember, KISA is the Kansas Educational System of Accreditation. So it's our accreditation cycle. Typically, in the past, it's been a five to six year cycle to go through. So, the meetings that I've been a part of so far is that they're trying to get it to four fundamentals. What those four fundamentals right now look like, reading and/or structured literacy, standards alignment, data collection and usage, and high expectations or some sort of structured instruction. So, and the reason that I say and/or is one meeting, it was one thing and another meeting was a different thing. So, they should be rolling out what those four fundamentals are supposed to be in late October. And so I should have a little bit more information for you. The way that this year will look is we will meet three to four, there's a required two meetings. So we're probably going to meet about three times with another district. And we have chosen to partner with Pratt and they are on board and we will go to ESDAC. And actually, ESDAC will help us facilitate those meetings to look at our goals, look at where we're headed, and kind of facilitate that for this year. And then sometime in the spring, we believe that there will be a representative from the state that will come to the district and meet with our administrative team as to what work we've done this year. You know, there's supposed to be four of those representatives hired by KSDE. And right now, that's still kind of up in the air as to who that person is actually is going to be. So, we're hoping to do that and then we're hoping for a full rollout and a much clearer direction for the 24-25 school year.
But those four representatives have to visit how many districts in the state?
370 odd districts. So, they've got a tall task and right now, the state only has one hired. So, they're three short on that. So, we'll see how that goes. But I think the meetings with the other district will be vital in this. So, it'll probably be more important than the KSDE visit, so.
Any questions on any of the accreditation, on the update? Again, that'll be a whole long process over several years, I'm sure, again. So, if nothing else on that, move to item B, September 20th count date numbers?
So I wanted to present this to you and give you a realistic picture as to what our numbers are actually doing. I put it in your board pack and this is public information. You can take a look at the top two numbers, all headcount pre-K 3 through 12. So that's our pre-K three-year-olds all the way through 12th grade. That's actually the number of heads that we have in seats. And then you can also look at K through 12 numbers. So, our numbers are trending down. I mean, that's, I just want to be real clear about that. So, if you look at that K through 12 number, you know, we're 30 down in terms of actual K through 12 students that are enrolled here. We peaked back in 21-22 and then our trending numbers are downwards. And that doesn't even include the potential drop of 40 students over a two-year period of time when this year's eighth grade and freshman numbers graduate. So, I mean, it's vital that we, you know, that we take a look at that. I know it's been suggested that we take a look at seeing if we can determine why. So, you know, we have not talked about that administratively yet, but we will be talking about that. So, questions?
To me, our budget set this year based on last year's or two years ago.
Two years ago numbers. So, we were fortunate that they went ahead and the Governor Lyon item vetoed because it would have cost us about $20,000 if it would have just been the last year's numbers. So.
But two years down the road, we could see a significant reduction in state funding.
Just a question, will the daycare numbers add into this?
Daycare numbers won't add into this. If we did end up picking up some of them from, in the preschool, that might be a benefit. Or if we can keep them from preschool on into kindergarten, that might be a benefit as well. You know, some of the things that I've talked to some of our community people about is, I mean, we need quality housing. If we don't have quality housing, people aren't moving here. They're choosing to move to Great Bend. So, that's, I mean, that's a concern.
Any other questions on the count? One of those things, we'll have to start looking ahead and start making some adjustments in the future on financing for sure. And class sizes even at that point.
Correct. Yeah.
All right, go to item C, October 30th, fifth Monday meeting?
Okay, at the beginning of the year, in terms of fiscal year, the July board meeting, we mentioned putting in a fifth Monday meeting. That Monday would be designed to specifically look at data. The administrative team and I have talked about, we would look at spring of 2023 state assessment data as well as Fastbridge for fall of '22, winter of '22-23, spring of '23, and fall of '23. And that would kind of give us a little bit longer look as opposed to just the state assessments, which is a one day. Is everybody still on board with doing that meeting?
Everybody good with that?
Okay. And I'll send out a reminder since it is kind of a different one, so.
I know something always comes up, we have to add something, but the primary purpose is for, to look and review the data. But like normal, there's usually something that.
Yeah, may pop up. So, yep. So that'll be our primary focus and we're, you know, our admin team's working hard to make some things that is, that is, you know, that you can read relatively easily as well. So that we can have good discussions about that.
If it's not listed, but I'm assuming seven o'clock start time?
Yes.
If there's no objections, we'll plan on that October 30th at seven o'clock. Halloween costumes are optional. Item D, retaining wall project. I had been approached by several community members about the retaining wall on the east side of the football field, that we've fixed up the football field and the track. That retaining wall is getting into disrepair. And it's been like that ever since I can remember. So I have no idea when that wall was put in, probably back when the track was put in. And so, Sarah and Patrick and I had talked about going ahead and seeing what the possibilities were of rebuilding that retaining wall, whether, what it would take to either relay those rocks or put a different type of rock in there or something, so.
So, I've met with one person so far. Still waiting on an estimate, hoping to reach out to a couple of other people as well. The wall is not caving in, it just looks bad. But then, the other thing we have to keep, consider as well is I have to put in an application with the State Historical Society to make that change and kind of talk about that with them. But I'm also going to reach out to the Historical Society to see if there's any grant money that we might be able to utilize as well. Because this could be, this could be a $50,000 project. So, I'll work this month to get more estimates and see what kind of options we have.
Who have you reached out to?
Cassidy Smith. So he does this also. He has a background in masonry and so.
And then I had given Patrick a name of another outfit at Beloit that does masonry type work. So, there are people out there that do it. It's just finding them and getting them. Is everybody comfortable with looking at that and seeing what possibilities are? There's two things. It's getting where it doesn't look very good and the other part is the safety issue because I've seen kids running up and down that wall and it just doesn't look like it probably should, so. If there's no objections, we'll proceed looking at options for that. Item E, review of policy for memorials, funerals, and naming of facilities.
So just wanted to, you know, kind of bring this to you.
Bless you.
Bless you. Dean actually asked me to go ahead and put this on here. We've had a request and that's item F. We've had a request to rename the press box after Dr. Blake Harris, which I believe is an appropriate thing. But the review of our policy currently states that naming a facility, a board will consider, the board will consider requests from school and community groups to name an athletic or other school activity facility building or a portion of thereof for a person provided the proposed name has special significance and/or the person has made an outstanding contribution to the school or the school system and has been deceased for at least 10 years. The board shall consider naming requests after they are recommended by the superintendent. So, we put together and the proposal to rename the track after Bill Kimball. And we overdid that. And so this is the second time in four years that we have had a request and it doesn't meet the policy. So, you know, I believe, I believe it would be appropriate maybe to consider this and to consider the idea of taking out this section on how long it's been deceased if the board, if the board so chooses to do that. And if that's the case, I will rewrite this policy, bring it to you for the first reading next month and then in December, we can approve that.
It's one of those things, we have policies and we either live by the policies or if two exceptions in four years, probably means we need to change the policy, so. And Dawn, do you remember, we put this in in 16, why that 10 years was in there?
If I remember right, we had some that were, we questioned just the contribution they had made. You know, was it substantial enough to begin to do that? I mean, it wasn't, we weren't against anybody. It was just, had it been the 10 year, the time long enough?
Substantial enough that after 10 years, it would be remembered?
Right.
And it kind of was in conjunction with the naming the auditorium, the Lee Dicks Auditorium. Because we didn't have a, really a set policy before that.
Okay.
So that's when, that we came up with this, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know there was anything magical about the 10 years.
No. It was just a number, I think, that we were given that somebody had used somewhere else and so.
Any other thoughts, Sarah?
Unless, would we just take out the number of years? Is that all we were going to do with the policy?
I think there should be something in there, you know, to the effect of not necessarily a year, but, and not a dollar amount. I'm not saying that, but something, something to the effect of, you know, each circumstance will be considered individually or, you know, and maybe, maybe even, you know, the decision will be made over a two-month period or something like that. That way, that way we're not making an emotional decision on something. We can, we can review it at one meeting and then make the final decision at another meeting. I mean, you know, I'm just kind of spitballing here, but I can look at some other policies and see what there is, so.
I really think that the rest of the policy is probably pretty sound. It's just that last phrase about the 10 years. Everybody good with Mr. Kratos, look at revising that?
Yep.
Okay, that will move us down to the next item.
So just, you know, just a heads up and I think most of you are aware, the Harris family has donated funds through the memorial after Dr. Harris's funeral. They have chosen to put that in, into the educational foundation so far and then utilize that money to renovate the press box. So I'm waiting on some numbers from a contractor to kind of give an idea of where we would be and what we would be able to do. And then I would be able to give you a better idea. And then, you know, then Mr. Mason and I have both discussed the idea of going ahead and naming the press box after Dr. Harris. So, so just giving everybody a heads up on that as well.
And if I'm wrong, that's the last, first part of the football field. We have the track named, the stadium named, the press box, that'd be it, right?
Unless we're going to name the concession stand or.
Or the retaining wall.
The Dean Stovskoff retaining wall. But no, you know, that would, that would probably be, that would probably be the limit. I do have, just so everybody's on the same page, I do have approval from the Historical Society to do that, to make renovations to the press box, so.
So I know you've worked with one contractor on looking at some ideas. I would like to see you get several of the local contractors involved too. If we can keep that local, it would be helpful. Get some different options and different ideas.
Sounds good.
Okay, nothing else? We'll go to item G, is that right?
Yep.
Good evening. I'm here to request to take eight to 10 kids to Birmingham, Alabama, November, we leave November 9th. And then our conference will be November 10th and 11th, and then return home the 12th. This is a national, a mini-national conference and if the kids, this is what they have worked for two years to earn the money for. And this may be the only chance that they get to go to like a national meeting. They get to go learn more about our national programs, bring up my ideas to implement into our community and new ideas for fundraising and for community service projects and things like that. And then they also hear great speakers and they get to meet people from all over the United States and then make friends also. So we're asking just for the vehicle. We will pay for transportation, the gas. The only thing the district would have into it is for the warranty on the vehicles. And at this point, I'm not for sure how many. I need to find out who all is committed to go. We just wrapped up our fundraiser last Friday and so I'm not for sure how many of them are, okay, we have this much money. Yes, I will go or no, I won't go.
And you're talking driving from here?
Yes. Flying to Washington, that was, seemed like a good idea, but we could have drove it faster than what we got there. And we routed to Chicago and.
Is that the last time that you guys?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I think it was, yeah, it was two years ago.
Carla and I were trying to figure out, you know, when this happened last time, so they.
Went two years ago to Washington and then they really weren't interested in going to Columbus. And then the seniors this year were like, we want to go, we want to go. And so they've been working hard this year. And then some of the newer members are really working hard too, so. And it just depends on when, when their practices fall and things too.
Yeah, and we looked at the schedule. That actually falls in buffer week, so transportation shouldn't be an issue. So, there didn't seem to be any conflicts.
And I think that might be the weekend of our showcase. But I don't think any of my students, of course, they would stay here for that.
Yeah.
But I don't think any of the students are interested in vocal music. And then I do have one or two football players that are interested in going, but they would register. If they would get beat out, we won't register them on the 11th, they have to be registered by, but we would pay for them down there.
Okay.
We can pay late registration if they would get beat out.
Okay. So I think this will be a quality thing for them to go to. They've worked really hard to get to this point, so. Yep.
Two drivers or just one?
Probably two. It's like 13 and a half hours.
Right.
And I've even thought about driving to Memphis, spending the night there on Thursday and then getting up and going the next day and then driving back. Because Saturday evening, we end like at 7:30 or 8:00 and then driving back to Memphis. And then, that way it's not 15 hours. And that's fast stops.
Right.
With teenagers.
We've done it for 40 years.
And if you go to, I don't know if you guys are familiar with Buc-Ee's, but if they find a Buc-Ee's.
And there is a Buc-Ee's down there.
Yes. It's a quick shop with everything.
It's hard to get in and out.
Oh, yeah, there is no such thing.
Okay.
I move that we allow FCC LA to do their out-of-state trip.
Motion has been made and seconded that we approve out-of-state travel for FCC LA to Birmingham, Alabama with the use of a Suburban. Any other discussion? Not all in favor? Pose, motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Okay, old business, now the fun stuff.
Yeah.
Policy JBCC.
So I would recommend that you open up the timeline or the process, the process. Recommend that you open that up just to make sure we have some context as to, you know, kind of, kind of what we would be looking at. So the pre-time line is what we're working on right now. And that is the, you know, after discussion that we have this evening, that we go ahead and I move forward with publishing in the dispatch that we will be having a notice of hearing. So that has to run two consecutive weeks. On the 19th, I will also go ahead and post on the website a copy of the draft of the policy as well as the notice of hearing as well. Then, on December, or November 6th at 7:00, we will have basically like our budget hearing. We will open up hearing for public comment, see if there's any public comment at that point in time. And we will close that, just like adjourning, just like we do our budget meeting. And then we will reopen with our regular board meeting. And then the regular board meeting is where we will actually do the approval of the policy draft that we've been talking about for the last four months. So then April 8th.
And you have 2023, that would be 24.
You're right, 23, so, okay. So I will make that, make that change. But April 8th, 2024 is our, is our board meeting that will precede the May 1st deadline to create capacity. to create capacity or to set our capacity numbers. Uh, those capacity numbers will be um, based on discussion and information that we get from administrative input. Um, we talked about it today, uh, we don't wanna set our numbers too high. Uh, but we also don't wanna set our numbers unrealistically low, uh, to not give us a gap to be able to accept out-of-district students if it, if, if we so choose to do so. And this is all based around the idea that we are going, that we are going to look at tonight's draft and say, yes, this is what we're gonna move forward with, okay? So then the timeline meets the state statutes. By May first, again, setting the capacity, that is then published. Um, by May fifteenth, it is published on our website. Those capacity numbers are per grade level K through eight. So each individual grade level will actually have a, a capacity number. And we will publish the number between how many students we feel like are gonna be in that class and how many students we feel like will accept. So that, that's, that's a, it's a, it's a gap number. We're not gonna give the total number, we'll just give the gap number. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay, and then the capacity for nine through twelve is based on building and or program. Um, program would be um, in the event like, like Dodge City has um, they have a lot of different um, CTE clusters. And so they would maybe build their capacity based on those clusters. We'll probably choose to do our capacity based on the total building number for the, for the high school. Then June first of each year, the number of open seats will be published and posted, so by June first. Then between June first and June thirtieth of each year, the district will accept applications for non-resident students. This will take place very similar to what it did this year. Our um, our new enrollment, um, electronic enrollment, Jordan set it up in Power School. That all brand-new students to the district actually filled out an application and then were sent to him and I. Actually, it was sent to the building administrators, but he's rerouting that to he and I. Because if you realize, on June thirtieth, our building administrators will not be in the buildings. I will collect all of those, and then I will meet with the building administrators the first part of July to start having the discussion as to um, you know, moving forward. Have we met our capacity, um, you know, tho- those types of questions. Then by June, July fifteenth of each year, notification of acceptance of non-resident students will be made. And the lottery will be conducted and notifications made for grades and programs where the number of applicants exceed the number of open seats. So that gap, if we have seven in grade three, and we end up with ten applicants in grade three, then it, we look at whether siblings are here, we look at are they homeless students? Um, we look at are they students of our staff members? And those people don't count against our capacity number. And then anything above that is a lottery. Now, what a lottery looks like has been described in several different ways, but it's not clearly defined by the law as well. So um, we will help, we will hold a lottery uh, to determine who fills those open seats.
Um, last time we talked, did we bring up like families that we've accepted like every year for, you know?
Yes, and though, yes, those, those are grandfathered in.
Like every year, do they have to?
As long as they continue to be students in good standing.
So will they have to though?
They will not, no, no, they will not have to. So like students that we've accepted and have been going here for years up to this year, um, they, they will not have to reapply. These are only for students that would be new to our district as of the, as of, you know, June one of twenty twenty-four. New to our district as of June twenty-four. So um, you know, and then, but then it does open it back up that any non-resident district, uh, in, any non-resident student can be reviewed to make sure that they are a student in good standing. And as of now, the way I've written the policy and, and we can, it's on here, but the way I wrote the policy was relatively vague. And that's on purpose, because the way we accept out-of-district students right now is based on these three criteria. Attendance, academic progress, and behavior. And we feel that those are things that the parent and the student can control. They can control their attendance, they can control their behavior, they control their academic performance. And so um, you know, some policies are being written much more detailed. I don't feel like the, I don't feel like I wanna get into that detail just yet. Because really, we want all of our students to have good attendance, good academic progress, and good behavior. Whether they're an in-district student or an out-of-district student, a resident district, or a resident student or a non-resident student. So um, and so then by May one, the admin team and I will sit down and review out-of-district students. We'll, we'll start with the newest out-of-district students. Um, but then if there's issues, we'll review other out-of-district or non-resident students, sorry, I'm trying to use the right terms. Um, to review whether students are in, um, um, students in good standing at that point in time. And then those students will be um, notified. If they are not in good standing, they'll be notified that they will not be accepted back. So what, what I'm basically saying, and I called KSB, and I asked KSB, well, what if we don't do anything? And KSB said, nothing will happen until somebody basically sues you for you not accepting them, because this is actually state law. Um, so the first year is, I mean, so if we choose to move forward with JBCC, the first year is the doors are thrown open and every student can go to every, any district that they choose to. And I'm saying that in a very broad term, because there's been, there's been a lot of discussion as to, well, what happens with a special ed student and transporting that special ed student who's responsible for those types of things? That really gets into the weeds. We're really wanting to, you know, how is this going to overall, overwhelmingly look at the big picture? And then for years two and subsequent years, then the district has then more control as to whether or not that student is contin- allowed to continue to stay in our district. As in our discussion that we were having today, our application is very specific on a few items as to uh, expulsions. Um, uh, you know, academic, academic um, progression. Um, so there's some specific things that if we find out that an applicant lies to us, then we can immediately remove them. So if a student has been expelled, and they don't tell us that they've been expelled because they're not allowed in if they've been expelled in another district. And they tell us, they lie to us basically, we will remove them immediately at that point in time. Does that make sense? Cause then they misrepresented themselves on the application. And so we'll, we'll, we'll make sure that we're trying to, you know, have a safe environment at that point in time.
So if we say we got seven for the third grade. And my youngest wants to come over. Does that mean we're down to six? So, or do we still do the seven?
So that would, that would mean that we would be down to six, cause we would increase the number of students in that class. We would take that person because it's a sibling.
Okay.
And a, and a, and they wouldn't have to necessarily go to the lottery, or they would get priority, um, because they, they're a sibling.
Okay.
So um.
So that number will come down.
Yes.
If we have those extra.
Yep.
See, I, I'm, what went through my mind is, we say seven, and we don't count those.
Yeah.
And then all of a sudden, we take seven more, and then we've got three.
Now, now we've got three, three extra.
Where are we gonna put them, you know?
Yeah, so that's, that's where, that's where setting those numbers is kind of a tricky, a tricky issue. Cause I mean, you know, this year, how many kindergarteners did we end up getting? We ended up getting ten kindergarteners this year.
Right.
I don't know that we would've set our number, I think we would've set our number probably less than ten, for sure.
I imagine this is the first time since I've been here that we've had influx with kindergarten.
Yeah, and, and some of those, some of those moved into the district, and so that then.
This is gonna get touchy.
Get, narrows our gap.
Yeah.
So, yes, yes, so this, and I, I'm gonna say this out loud. This is a non-issue, because this is all, this has all been happening for a long time. I mean, I've been in administration for, you know, well, sixteen years, and this has been a non-issue. I, I'm so, sorry, but that's just.
It'll also longer than our hands.
Right.
So we have to go by what state says.
Mm-hmm, I mean, we, I, I tried to be as creative as possible. I didn't change a whole lot of JBCC that it, it was KSB recommended. If you do go ahead and look at that, it does define, it does do a good job of having some definitions. Um, you know, homeless children, uh, non-resident student, parent, um, uh, receiving district sibling, and then it does go ahead and um, lay out uh, a little bit more, in more detail, the timeline. And then the prioritization of the seating, which goes into whether or not it's a military, whether it's a homeless child, whether it's a, a child uh, that's in the custody of the Department of Children and Family. Um, if, if it's a um, a child of a potential employee that we've hired, um, so those, some count against. Uh, some, excuse me, some do not count against the capacity number. But again, we don't wanna end up with five extra kids in a class. And now our, you know, you know, now our kindergarten class has, you know, twenty-five kids in a, in a classroom. So we, we have to really be careful of, of how those numbers are set. Um, and then, you know, like siblings take priority, but we don't necessarily have to take them. Um, so, you know, those are kinda touchy issues. Um, and then uh, here's one thing to be said out loud in public as well, this does not change casia eligibility. So a child comes over from, let's say, Great Bend, there's no bona fide move, that child is still a transfer student. So the eligibility policies for casia and unless they are a seventh grader or a freshman, they're, they have established their eligibility somewhere else, and so that transfer would mean that Mr. Kraft and Mr. Flowers would have to work with the losing district to determine whether or not child would be eligible to play sports. Is that, so that, that does not change, none of that changes. So.
Does this apply to the preschool as well?
Does not apply to preschool, K through twelve only. Yep, good question.
So the existing policy that we've had for years on preschool out-of-district would still work for that?
Yes, yep.
Cause that policy has worked pretty well.
Yes.
Around the years.
Yes. Um, one thing the policy does go ahead and, and, and state is that, you know, we, you know, we are, we should not discriminate against, you know, you know, children with disabilities or children with, um, you know, you know, you know, race, creed, you know, those types of things. And, and I think that goes without saying, but I also feel like we as a district have done a great job of looking at, again, the attendance, the academic performance, and the behavior, the three things that people can control. Um, we are not digging into the things that they don't have control over. So, I mean, so I, I really feel like we as a district have done a good job, job of that. Um, at least in the time that I've been here to make sure that we're not focusing on the things that can't be controlled, but the things that can be controlled.
Any other questions? Do we need a motion to, to set that hearing or just?
Um, it might not be a bad idea to say that.
Get back to the process.
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that. Um, I'm reading through here. And I'm gonna apologize, I meant to put on the board. Let me make sure, I'm, I had to change some things around here. Okay, so I did put the draft on here, for some reason I clicked on a different document. Um, the last couple of sentences or the last page, JBCC six um, is where uh, I put in, and this would be not verbiage from KSB, so if, if, I mean, I, I'm not an English teacher, so if you don't agree with this. Um, I did put the verbiage in here, "Non-resident students will be evaluated each spring on the following criteria to determine their status as a student in good standing. Attendance, academic progress, and behavior. USD four thirty-one believes all students and parents have the ability to have control over these three above items. Administration will determine the status of each non-resident student on an individual basis based on student's ability to meet the above criteria. Parents shall be informed of any administrative decision not to continue enrollment of non-resident students no later than May one."
Everybody comfortable with that part? If there's no other discussion, I move that we hold the hearing for the JBCC policy on November the sixth at seven PM.
Thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded, neither of the discussion, all in favor? Pose, motion carries seven zero. And just for agenda purposes, we'll have that at seven o'clock, and then when we adjourn that, we'll immediately go into the regular meeting, so.
Okay.
I don't think we have to set a time for the regular meeting.
I won't, I won't put one on there.
Yeah. All right, item B, superintendent evaluation.
And this was brought up last month, and, and I just wanted to bring it back, uh, to give you guys a little bit more time to look at that if you chose to. Um, there was a, um, KSB has suggested a different evaluation, which is more of a ongoing process. Um, uh, I didn't know if you wanted to move to that evaluation, or if you wanted to stay with the one um, that I did go ahead and convert to a Google form. So just here for discussion and, and what you guys would feel comfortable with.
Input?
So this, the conversation-driven performance evaluation. So, is it a tool, or is it, like, you know, software, or? That we would have to purchase, or what?
It's, 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 it's a tool very similar to what we have, it's just an electronic format. It's nothing that we would have to purchase, they, KSB would provide that for free. They were looking for, um, uh, districts that might wanna try it out. And, and I would be perfectly fine if we stayed with what we've got, and, and especially since we kind of fixed it in a Google form. And, cause this one is relatively new, uh, I'm gonna be hundred percent honest, it's probably less than three months old.
So, do you wanna be a guinea pig or not?
All depends on if I'm in the fire.
I'm fine to leave it as is for now.
I'd say we're sort of behind the eight ball, as far as timing on what, you know, the new format would be. So, I don't, you know, we could look at it this summer and change if that's what you wanna do at that point.
Yeah, that sounds good.
I don't think Dawn and I have a big input either way at this point. Everybody comfortable then, just leaving as is? So, I don't think that takes any action where we're not changing anything. Okay. Uh, item C, strategic planning discussion.
So I'm gonna pose the question to you like I posed it to the administration. Is this document something that you are comfortable with it being? The, remember when Gary talks about the, the, the top of the arch? When you guys are really looking at a thirty thousand foot view? And the goals on here is that thirty thousand foot view, as well as the mission and the vision. Are you comfortable as a board with that being our board strategic plan for the next five to seven years?
Comments, discussion?
Can changes be made at any?
I'm sure if we came to a consensus, yeah.
Set in stone, but.
Right, right.
Obviously, we need, you know, we need to establish it.
Right, but I mean, you know, having, having a direction that we're moving, is this the direction that we would like to move? And obviously, yes, I mean, no, no, no piece of paper can, you know, is, is, you know, even our constitution can be, you know, amended and ratified, and, you know, those types of things, so. But is this a direction that we can agree to move forward with?
I guess my fault, we had the community strategic planning group come together and meet. And I kinda promised people that we would come back with them when we're completed. We can do it either way, we can approve it like it is, and then take it to the people and say, this is what we did. Or, we could have one final meeting and present it to the, the group that helped develop it. And if, if the community sees any big changes, we could tweak it before we make the final approval. You know, and, and, cause I, I heard from several people that were there, was, how do we know that our time wasn't wasted? That we did it. And, and if we would take it back and have a community meeting again, show up to them, review it, and then approve it, would be.
I think that would be better, show it to them and then approve it.
So we had, add one more meeting before we get off done, so.
Well, we had October twentieth, so, or thirtieth. Just keeps adding meetings.
Yeah, yeah, just don't wanna give up.
He's gonna get me one way or another.
Is that the consensus of the board?
You know, I, I would like to see it done that way.
And if they don't, if the community doesn't show up, then, that's like they had their opportunity.
And, and, but I would like to invite the people that were involved in those two meetings to come back. And I don't know that we particularly need a meal or anything with that, just try to set it. What open date we might have. And, uh, do that, and then come back and, and then wrap it up.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so I will get to work on that meeting. All right. I would encourage you to read it, I know the administration has made a few, um, uh, changes. I, the utilization, like on, uh, the bottom of communications and accountability, uh, we tweaked that one, that's different from last month. Uh, utilize the Hoyington USD four thirty-one app. And the reason it's worded that way is because if you type in Hoyington USD four thirty-one in your app store, that's exactly what's going to come up, is the app. Um, and then district website to communicate district events, and I know in conversations, I believe here at the board, that was maybe something that had been, um, uh, had missed. Sometimes we send it out on Facebook, but it doesn't necessarily hit the website, so that's, uh, we as an administrative team have tried to do that in, in a better way as well, so. And then the vision was tweaked just a little bit, just some, um, grammatical changes to that.
Okay, item D, online payment system.
It's brought up last month, um, you know, we, we had, we had initially chosen to pass those fees on. Um, the, the fees, um, in the previous system had been absorbed by the district. As of yesterday, uh, those fees have been switched and are absorbed by the district at this point in time. So that change has already been made.
Any questions on that other? If not, any other business, we go into reports, Mrs. Walker.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, so our, our body venture made it. And I'm, um, it did end up coming, um, it was, and it was an absolute success. So, maybe planning something in a week isn't, isn't too bad. Um, I want to, uh, so I wanna say, so we were the third school that, cause this is a brand-new body venture, so he'd only been to two other schools before us, so it was very, very new coming to us. Um, uh, but I wanna, of course, thank, uh, Mrs. Cowan for getting all the volunteers set up, um, for the day, and she also got their lunches already. Um, a huge thanks to, uh, Roosevelt staff, who helped set up and tear down. And we even had some students out of Mr. Schmidt's class and Mr. Baird's class, who helped, so that was awesome. I mean, everybody really jumped in and made it possible, cause it is a lot of work, um, setting it up and tearing it down. And it is a really good workout tearing it down too, so. Um, we had huge compliments from, uh, Robert, he was the body venture coordinator, just on our facility that we put it up in. Uh, the organization of the events and our staff, so that's always really nice to hear. Um, we have an early release day on Wednesday, um, we dismiss at noon. The students, of course, will be fed lunch, there will be no preschool, so preschool will have classes on Friday this week then. Um, so Roosevelt will be working in the afternoon on our resilience training, we're gonna continue that this year. Um, and we also have trash bag sales pickup on Wednesday, late afternoon, early evening, from three thirty to six thirty. Um, also on Wednesday, Clara Barton will be, um, at Roosevelt, um, they'll be holding their vaccine clinic, um, in the morning, so. Thank you to Stacy for getting that all set up, she does a great job at that, and then, um, oh no, I forgot the date, I think it's on Friday. There will be hearing screenings for, uh, pre-K and kindergarten, and that's something else that Stacy does a good job at, at setting up for us, so. Uh, the kindergarten will go to the fire station on Friday, October thirteenth, um, in the afternoon, the kids absolutely love that day. Um, they get to do so many cool things, so we, we really appreciate our, our fire department for allowing us to come over. Um, we will have our NED presentation, so we've had NED for quite some time. But this year, they're coming in person, I'm so excited, it has been, they've been just online for several years now, and this year, they are coming in person, so they will be at Roosevelt on Monday, October fourteenth. And so, thank you to, um, Allison for getting that all set up, um, we're excited to have them back in the building. Uh, TK and kindergarten will be visiting P and M Pumpkin Patch in Mount Ridge on Thursday, October nineteenth. Last year, they visited one in Ellis, and they had an absolute blast, so we thought, why not do it again this year and go somewhere different? So, just give them the experience and the opportunity. Um, Pam Martin will be visiting the first grade on Friday, October twentieth. Um, I've also heard that Pam Martin will be retiring, so, um, we are gonna miss her, we hope that, hopefully, um, that program can continue, and they can find somebody else to, to come into our building for the first grade, cause it's always a really great experience for them. And then on Thursday, um, October twenty-ninth, we dismiss at noon, and have our first round of parent-teacher conferences from one to nine o'clock, and then there will be no school on Friday, October twenty-seventh. Any questions? Thank you.
Mrs. Cowan's ill this evening, so her report is, um, online.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, I don't have a whole lot this evening, uh, other than picture day was on the thirteenth. Packets were handed out today, so your kids should have the pictures. I don't know if that's the TV over there. Retakes will be on the November eighth, if you're, if you're looking at that. Uh, I've had several opportunities this month, or last month, for, uh, to collaborate with other administrators throughout the state. Uh, Nick and I went to the Leadership Academy in Fall River, um, like I said, last, last, uh, report, um, we get, we heard from experienced administrators, um, teaching us how to be, you know, good leaders, dealing with difficult situations. And then they also, uh, gave us some real-life scenarios that we had to work through as a group, and, and, you know, see how we would handle those, so. Uh, great opportunity to collaborate and network with other administrators to, to, uh, to see how they do things and, and, and build, build the knowledge base for their. Um, I also had the opportunity to go to Heston last week, uh, for a principals' meeting. We meet monthly as a league, but that's mainly geared toward athletics, uh, cause our A.D.s are with us, this is just the principals', and we decided to meet at a different school, so I'll host down the road, and they basically give us a tour of the school and show us how they do things, so it's just another opportunity to, to borrow and steal ideas and bounce ideas off one another to, you know, help ensure that, you know, you know, something that we can bring back here and help our students be successful. Uh, got a lot of things going on at the school right now, um, Mr. Andrew's STEM class, they're designing cities. Um, you know, where to put the housing, and where to put the power plants, and all that good stuff, and, um, he, uh, managed to uh, coordinate with our city manager and some of the city workers to come into the classroom, and, and the students presented their studies to them. And, you know, they kinda discussed, you know, you know, okay, you got your water plant here, how you gonna get the water from there to here? And, so it was a good lot, learning opportunity for our kids, it was pretty neat, I was in there, we got some pictures, uh, I'm gonna work with Gus and see if we can't get them on the, the internet, so, uh, the community members can see that too. Um, we have an eighth-grade field trip scheduled to Exploration Place, uh, down in Wichita. Our PE classes have started, uh, their fitness testing, today was everybody's favorite fitness test, the mile run. Uh, a lot of red faces, but everybody did survive, so that was a good, that was a good day. Um, on Wednesday, we have a half-day where we'll do our resilience training with, uh, with our staff. Um, and then, you know, again, you know, one of the bright spots for us is our office refers are still way down from last year. Um, and s- the, the number of students we have are, on our eligibility list is also way down. Uh, I think we got about fifteen students on there now, as compared to about seventy at this time last year, so. Uh, again, a testament to our, the growth and maturity of our kids over the summer, and the dedication and time our staff's putting in to help them learn and grow as individuals, so, that's all I got, any questions?
Mr. Flowers.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, just some upcoming events for the middle school for athletics, football, we have two remaining dates. This Thursday, we will be at home versus Hillsboro, seventh grade and eighth grade will get a game. Seventh grade will only be three quarters due to Hillsboro's numbers. Uh, then they will travel next Thursday to Smoky Valley, where they will play two full games to finish the season. Volleyball will have the same two dates, but along with this weekend, seventh grade will travel to our tournament in Pratt. And then the following weekend, we will have CKL volleyball at Halsted, where as of right now, we do have a pet bus scheduled to take forty kids who have signed up to go and cheer on the Lady Cards. Um, cross-country is, got two remaining meets as well, first this week at Sterling, and then next Thursday, they will finish the season at CKL at Pratt. Um, our cheer with it being their first year, they have three remaining fall dates, they're gonna be at our, well, sorry, two remaining home dates. One is for our home football, and then they're going to work with the high school cheer during senior night. Um, and then band is currently preparing to go and attend and watch the FHSU Marching Festival as well. Uh, some results, football right now is working through a hard season, they're working to grow. They have, are fighting on the eighth grade level to get that first win, very close last week, just continuing to grow and having to push through some mentality stuff. Uh, volleyball, lots of success as, as tradition this year. Uh, eighth grade, they had five additional games added to their schedule this year. Uh, with that, they've only dropped five matches, and none of them have been to a legal opponent. So, they, they've battled very hard, seventh grade dropping only one match so far this year. Uh, cross-country has been tearing it up with their two young ladies who are out. Both of them have placed in the top four at every single meet, very proud of those two young ladies for taking on the challenge. And then cheer is being very successful with their first season back, they've been at each home game getting fans involved, and have also attended homecoming, and they're scheduled to cheer during senior night. Uh, like Mr. Brungart mentioned, our eligibility is kind of a highlight right now. We're down to fifteen total Fs in the middle school, uh, from eleven students, compared to seventy-two Fs at this week last year. So, definitely nice, each week, we're able to pull every kid in and talk to them about homework help and ways that we wanna help push them to get their grade up as well. So, that's nice, and then we've already started basketball sign-up. Currently, thirty-four boys are claiming they plan to do basketball, and twenty-four girls. So, looking to continue having great participation. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Kraft is doing, uh, JV football tonight, I would encourage you to take a look at his report. Um, I'm sure Mr. Mason will mention it, but we are hosting, uh, substate volleyball. And, uh, we're not hosting, but regional cross-country is just down the road at, um, Lake Barton. So, encourage you to get out there and, and support those kids.
On the same day.
On the same day? On the same day.
I always have cross country starts.
Yeah.
Volleyball probably start about 2:00.
Yeah.
She had enough time to get to both.
Yeah.
Yeah. Half of my report was stolen already. But we also have an early release Wednesday. And we'll be doing our module five of our seven modules for that resiliency training. So, looking forward to continuing that. We are hosting the FCC LA District B Fall Conference here on Wednesday at the Activity Center. So, that'll be a pretty big conference. Claire Barton is also providing vaccines for us this Wednesday. We also have vision hearing screening for all sophomores on October 17th. And we are hosting a debate tournament on Saturday, October 21st. We are having our National Honor Society installation on Tuesday, October 24th at 7:00. We have a large pool of students that were eligible to apply for installation. So, that selection should be taking place this week. Parent teacher conference is on Thursday, the 26th. And we do have our ACT Work Keys Test scheduled for all juniors on Wednesday, November 1st. And that Work Keys Test kind of, kind of gives students a little bit of a guideline on career interest and their career, career guidance. That test kind of reveals strengths that they may have for, just give them other opportunities to look at different careers. Last month, I did report on all the different visitors that Mrs. Randolph brings into our school. And I think I need, I need to start letting you guys know that every month, who all comes in. So, this, this month, we have Fort H State University coming in, Barton Community College, an Army recruiter, Northwest Tech out of Goodland, Bethel College and Kansas Wesleyan. So, she does an excellent job of bringing in all the military branches, you know, four-year universities, big state universities, smaller private schools, community colleges, everybody. So, she does an excellent job of, of providing our kids with experiences to decide what they want to do at the next level. So, that is what we have going on at the high school.
Since Mr. Kraft isn't here, one question. I see Kasia had changed the number of games for softball and baseball.
Yes.
From what, 20 to 26 games?
Yes.
How are you going to squeeze in or are you going to attempt to squeeze in three more double headers on that?
Well, first of all, softball's not a major deal. But with baseball, pitching is a big deal. Because they have the, you know, the pitch count limit. But those six additional games cannot cut into instruction time. So, in other words, they're going to be playing on Saturdays unless you start them late in an evening. The traveling team's going to have to get out as well, right? So, you know, the state, the Kasia does, I mean, they do a pretty good job of making sure we limit lots of instruction time, which makes sense. Every four years, we have to provide a, a report to Kasia on how many minutes our kids miss. And that's why I like, for example, track can only have two all-day track meets. Golf can only have two that begin before 1:00, those kinds of rules. But yet, wrestling, we, we make the kids show up three hours before it starts to weigh in, you know? So, anyway, I kind of got off on tangent there. But, yeah, the 26 games, I mean, that was pushed for by bigger schools, which makes sense when they can run three full teams, have bullpens and have the pitching for it. But it'll be a challenge for us for sure. And I know it does take an effect this spring, but I don't know if we've made a decision yet if we're going to add all.
Are we required to add those six? Or is that just if you want?
Yeah. Just as if you want. Which is really good. Yeah. You know, I mean, pros and cons. If, I guess if I'm, if I'm the baseball coach and if we, if our pitching's pretty thin, you know, is it worth it to add six more games to get that experience for those kids on the field? But yet, maybe you have to throw some kids that aren't experienced pitching, whatever, take six more losses, which is going to affect your standings in substate. But the flip side, you're getting experience for the kids, you know? So, it's just a coaching philosophy that, that our coaches will have to look at and determine what's best for their team. But that did pass, yeah.
I see that.
Yep.
And they didn't lengthen the, lengthen the season out, so, you know?
Right.
It's compressed that much more.
Yeah. And.
And it's already the shortest season.
It's already the shortest season, exactly. So, you know, obviously, we have rain, rainouts. So, a lot of times, we don't get all 20 in the way it is because of rainouts. But, so we'll have, we'll have some Saturday games. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
Just a few things. I had mentioned in the weekly report, we did have a semi-clogged drain at the Activity Center that was corrected today. Tyler and, and Mike Riedel was able, were able to unclog that drain. Come to find out, it was, it was a makeshift RV dump pipe that had slipped into the RV dump site. So, Tyler and I have already started talking about if there's a way for us to, I mean, he, you know, obviously Tyler, you know, RVs and, you know, stuff like that. He said this is something he'd never seen before. So, it was really a makeshift apparatus. Typically, this would not be an issue, but he and I have already started talking about how maybe we can, you know, modify that so that something doesn't get slipped down in there again. So, so it's, that's all taken care of. I think we're, you know, back up and running 100%. We were never down at the Activity Center. So, it, it's just, you know, it was just clogged a little bit, but it was noticeable. So, it's all taken care of. The bags of rubber you may have noticed at the parking lot at the high school, those are our bags. So, they will be back late to end of the season to actually spread those on the football field. So, they'll lay down those eight bags and we'll never even notice that those are there. They wanted the field to settle a little bit, which I think it's done a good job. And Mr. Kraft and Tyler have done a good job of grooming the field to, to help that process. There is some dirt work and gravel that need to be moved and we're working on getting that done. It's kind of a trip hazard inside the fence. And so, we want to try to correct that. And we'll try to get that done as soon as possible to make sure that that's not a danger. Just recently, we went ahead and, went ahead and signed up for a frontline application portal. The process for us having applicants apply is either through the kansasteachingjobs.com website, which has changed throughout the years, or a paper application. And then, from that paper application, it really varies how it runs through the HR process. We wanted to streamline that process so that it was more consistent. Frontline provides us with the opportunity to do that. A lot of districts in our area use frontline for their applications. And so, it's a, it's a one-stop shop where you apply. All of the information is collected and it runs through. And then, by the end, we'll have, we'll be able to have all of the employees have all of their paperwork completely filled out through that process electronically. So, we are in our second or third training of that. And it's been relatively easy so far. And so, we, we plan on continuing to do that. There'll be more training. There'll be a link on our website at the end of the process. And it'll, it'll directly take you to frontline where it'll list out all of our open positions. So, it should be, a lot of districts use it, Great Bend uses it, Dodge City uses it. But it's not just the larger districts. So, I think it'll, it'll help internally to help us with making sure that we have all the right pieces whenever that person shows up in August. Or, or in the case of classified staff, whenever they show up and we have approved them, we'll have all of their paper or have all of their information. So, working with Mrs. Dolacek this week through basically a grant with the company, LifeVac. LifeVac is an anti-choking device. And I'm going to work with Mrs. Dolacek to help us provide training and documentation of that training for the LifeVac devices so that our, so that our staff in the lunchrooms have training, proper training and are familiar with how to, in case we have somebody choking. I was able to apply for one as well. So, there'll actually be one in every building as one as one act, as well as one at the Activity Center for concession stand in case of the event of somebody choking. So, I can send you, I'll send you more information about LifeVac as well. And then, working with Mrs. Dolacek also finally on the, the distribution and training of our, in our can so that we have that in our buildings. So, there's, there's videos, also using Great Bend's policy as an example, but in co, in conjunction to the policy that we approved as well as the documentation.
If you wanted to talk about.
Oh, sure. Just this past Monday, no, past Friday, we met administratively. Google has, this was initiated by Google, wasn't it, Carrie? Google has come to the schools and said, we need you to, we need you to have verification of approval from parents of anybody under 18 that is using a third-party entity that connects to your Google login. So, we will be, we will be sending out a opt-out through Power School in the next week or so. We use about 117 different third-party applications that use our Google information to log into. It is vital that we do, you know, we do continue to use that for academic purposes. It's not just games and willy-nilly stuff. These are part of our true academic pieces that we use on a daily basis. The, the one key piece, and Carrie was very good to point this out, is that when we talk about the information that we put in the Google system, all we use is first name, last name and email address. So, we don't put any personal information on any of our student or staff email or Google accounts. So, if there was a third-party breach, all they would get from us is first name, last name and email address. So, we're not, I mean, we're not putting ourselves out there to put any private information at all. Unless the student or staff does so.
As a district, we're not putting any of that.
Right. And, you know, we've had some comments in the recent, recent months, social security cards or social security numbers by students. We don't use any social security numbers by students. I mean, the only, we don't use that at all. It's not in Power School. It's not in any of our records. So, I mean, so that's nothing to do with that. So, does that make sense? Any questions?
But so, if a parent decides to opt their students out.
We will be contacting that parent to kind of help them understand what that would do.
The need for that being.
Yeah. Yeah.
And some might not understand, you know, which.
Right. Right. And so, we, we want to try to make it as, not, not simple, but as concise as possible whenever we send that out. Yep. Good point.
Any other questions for Mr. Kratus? If not any legislative report.
Just information, Canada Forum on there. I also gave you a paper copy of the KSB flyer. This is just information that I was given at the KSB State and Federal Issues meeting that I went to, as well as a draft of the KSB State Issues. Any changes for this year and read? So, I would encourage you to read through that. And then, you know, also, if you are interested in, in going to the KSB conference, please let me know. That is going to be November 10th through the 12th. So, please kind of let me know tonight if you are interested in going to that. I have three slots available. It doesn't necessarily need to be the three people that I signed up, even though you did get the emails. But I do understand, you know, life is busy, so. And then, November, I'm kind of skipping ahead. But November 9th is the Smokey Hills Legislative Lunch. And if you're interested in going to that, please let me know. If you want to go, I will go with you, but I will probably not go if one of you doesn't go. So, I mean, it's, it's a good lunch, but none of our people show up. So, it's not really pertinent to, you know? A lot of those guys like to hear the talk, so.
Any other legislative?
And I already skipped over the board stuff, so.
Okay. Any board member reports? Anybody have anything? If not, a move to go into executive session for 30 minutes pursuant to non-elected personnel exemption under KOMA for the purpose of discussing nominations and resignations with Mr. Kratus and Mr. Flowers present. Open meeting will resume at 9:00. Motion been made and seconded. Any other discussion, all in favor? opposed, motion carries 72. Posed, motion carries seven to.